Regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call vote. All members are here with the exception of Director Burnick and Director Velezquez. And Director Velezquez did let us know that he is running late due to traffic. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And due to the request by Director Herman to remove Policy 606.5 from tonight's agenda, I'm requesting for a motion to approve the agenda as amended without Section 13.3, Policy 606.5. Can I have a first and a second?
So made.
By Director Crosby. By Director Olstad.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 5-0. Opposed? Since we all said aye. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I totally forgot open forum.
Open forum.
Yeah, it was not on here. So I apologize for that. Let's go ahead and proceed with open forum. We have one comment. And that is by Dave Guild. And it's a levy on school board oversight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dave Guild, Prior Lake resident and a member of the Teaching and Learning Committee. Nice to see you all. So before I begin tonight, I reviewed the latest MCA test scores. And let's just say they were rather disappointing. So our student scores declined in nine out of 17 categories. And that's coming off the already steep declines following the remote learning experiment that this district put our students through. So like I said, disappointing. But tonight, I'm here to express my concerns about you all, the school board, and your potential oversight of $110 million plus. That's the floor should the upcoming referendum pass. So truthfully, I have not been sold on the referendum. You haven't done it for me, but mainly because of rising living costs. So I am looking around. I've seen gas and insurance and food and property taxes all growing significantly. And I've got neighbors who I've got in mind saying, do I want to impose a $110 billion levy on them? So the answer so far, I was leaning no. So if the average citizen can do with less, maybe the school district should not get more, especially with the flatlining of the student population in recent years. So that was my main line of reasoning until last month. So I've been following the school board meeting to gain more insights, maybe find a reason to vote yes. Well, after last month's meeting, I moved from a lean no to a firm hell no. And Chair Franz, Mary Franz, you are the reason for that change.
So we have rules that you cannot call out or disparage individual members?
Well, now I'll just go to facts.
Okay.
So that's, that to me is my fact. That's my truth. But anyway, so when Director Atkinson raised what I thought was a valid budget question about a video curriculum expense being split between two budget lines, there was rudeness somewhere up here and an outright refusal to address that particular question that set off alarm bells. It sounded like an attempt to avoid transparency, especially since Lisa's earlier questions that were very simple were allowed to be asked and answered. So I later learned, and no thanks to you, Mary, which because I did send you an email and you did not reply, that it was a single 30K expenditure that was indeed split into two lines with each staying under 25K. And that meant it avoided scrutiny. So the chair's extreme rudeness, sorry, in shutting down a fellow member's budget question along with the board's acceptance of this behavior, so much for Minnesota nice, raised serious concerns about this board's honesty, transparency, and willingness to be held accountable for how you spend our hard-earned tax dollars. So my fellow Prior Lake and savage citizens, until this school board conducts itself respectfully and forthrightly in its budget oversight responsibilities, I urge you to vote hell no on the levy. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which time the item will be moved as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda item consists of financials, purchase orders above $25,000, monthly financial report, the enrollment report, approval of the school board minutes from the regular board meeting on August 12th and the board retreat from August 26th and the study session from August 26th, personnel items, which includes candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, nonrenewals, leaves of absences. And that is it. So I would like a motion and a second on the consent agenda. By Director Olstad.
Sorry.
Second by Director Crosby. Does any, okay. All right, then.
So does anyone have anything they'd like to pull yes? I would like to pull the purchase orders over $25,000, please.
Okay, so the purchase orders over $25,000, which is Item 7B, will get moved to the new business area under Item 12. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion for the consent agenda for all items. I mean, ask for a vote on the consent agenda for all items less 7B, which will be moved to the new business area.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Olstad. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. Okay, next item on the agenda is the resolution for acceptance of gifts. Tonight, we have one gift from Shields for 24 backpacks donated through their Give Back program. I need a motion and a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Olstad. Okay, and this is a roll call vote. Director Atkinson?
Aye.
Director Velezquez?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Olstad?
Aye.
And aye, so that passes 6-0. All right, next on the agenda, we have Laker Pride. And I'm going to pass this over to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Franz, Board Directors. Tonight, we are going to have a little Laker showcase. One of the areas that we are going to be focusing in on heavily this year, as you all know, is academic excellence. And given everything that's happening with the Read Act and literacy, and we just heard, you know, we are not exempt like many other districts in terms of this whole conversation around literacy performance of our students. And this is something that we take very seriously. And we wanted to share an update with you all and kind of showcase the work that many of our staff have engaged in. So with that, I'll have Dr. Edwards come forward to talk about our efforts and our deep commitment around bolstering the academic excellence specifically tonight around literacy.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Members of the board, I'd like to share with you, as Dr. Thomas pointed out, some detail, further detail. We've been talking about the Read Act since its original adoption in May of '23. And there was an updated adoption then in May of '24 as well by the state legislature. And in between that time, which was last school year, the '23-'24 school year, we did some original investigating and looking into that. And we had a team of staff who were kind of on the front lines of work in our learning as a school district around this. And that's the team that I'm going to bring up here to share with us tonight where we're at in that process and where we are headed for this year, the '24-'25 school year, which will begin our training phase of the Read Act. And we'll go into greater detail here in a moment. But as Dr. Thomas pointed out, obviously, our newly adopted strategic plan in June, this past June, has identified our priorities. And very clearly, our priorities with relation to this presentation tonight are around the area of academic excellence. And one of the things that we know, and I've been up here a number of times, variety of topics, talking about the strength and the ability of our staff. And one of the first things we need to do is invest our time and energy in making sure that our staff are trained to the best extent possible. And we, again, identified a group that took an advanced look at this and looked at the options associated with the Read Act and the components of the Read Act and have worked on bringing that forward. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up three members of our teaching and learning team, two members of our broader teaching and learning team and one of our principals. These were three of seven folks who were a part of our initial training that we went through last year. And they're going to go into greater detail. And they are, will be part of the team that will be bringing that out to all of our staff, beginning at our October Staff Development Day for those staff who need to begin that training process. So without further ado, I have our principal at Five Hocks Elementary, Katie Sherman, with us, one of our peer coaches, Michelle Guzman, who is a peer coach currently at Jeffers Pond and Laola Delago, and Gwen Molden, our district curriculum specialist.
I'm Michelle Guzman, the peer coach. So the purpose of today is to share the professional development portion of the Read Act. So as you know, the Read Act is a piece of legislation that Minnesota passed and signed into law in May of 2023. It was just updated in May of 2024. And the goal of the Read Act is to have all students reading at or above grade level starting in kindergarten. So the professional development that we're going to talk about today is really in response to, to the Read Act. So the Read Act is really an approach to take everything we know about what's called the science of reading and apply that to our students in the state of Minnesota. So when we say the science of reading, we're referring to is a vast body of research and evidence that guides us in knowing how to teach reading and writing. So the professional development we're going to talk about today really is grounded in what's called the science of reading.
Good evening. We are getting excited. We've been hearing about the Read Act since May of 2023. And now we actually get to start the work this year. MDE identified a number of people, key players in the instruction of literacy. We have actually identified a few more than what MDE is recommending. Our Phase 1 training in Prior Lake will include all of our early childhood classroom teachers, our K-5 classroom teachers, our pre-K through 12th grade classroom teachers, all of our K-8 reading interventionists, our YEL teachers at the elementary sites, all of our pre-K through 5th grade curriculum directors, all of the elementary principals, all of the elementary deans, and all of our peer coaches. So when they came out with the legislation, they approved three potential professional development programs. I do think it's important to note that these are trainings and not curriculum that we will be delivering to students. Through the CARRY Institute of the University of Minnesota, they had Advancing Language and Literacy, the Consortium on Reaching Excellence in Education, or CORE, presented online language and literacy academy. And then you've maybe heard of LETTERS, which stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So those are the three recommended professional development programs. When we broke those down, the CARRY program required 67 hours in total, 17 of synchronous, 45 to 50 of online learning individually by teachers. OLA was 57 with three hours of synchronous learning and 45 to 54 hours of asynchronous or on their own learning. The LETTERS is significantly more, more of an investment in time. The training hours were 48 hours of synchronous learning, 50 to 61 hours of online module learning, and then 18 to 28 hours of training manuals. So when we looked at that in narrowing down what we chose, we are ending up with OLA training. Through a long process of a lot of work, our training hours will be three hours of synchronous training. And our teachers will be asked to do 45 to 50 hours of asynchronous or independent learning of their, with the online modules and the reading. So some reasons that we landed on OLA is we worked very closely with PLSEA and were committed to putting our trainings within our already approved school year calendar. And this implementation was the most flexible that of the three. The training hours fits into the district's schedule. Seven of us in the district completed this training last year and feel it was a high-quality training that will meet the goals that we have as a district. There are two really good resource books that all of our registered staff will get. And there is a strong emphasis on multilingual learners, which is important in today's world. And established program for two decades, this is not a program that was designed simply in response to the Read Act legislation.
Before I go over the plan, I also want to just mention that of the seven of us that did that OLA training last spring, there were four of us who had also done the LETTERS training. So we felt like we had a good comparable between the two and felt like OLA was a better fit for our staff. So when we got to the creation of the plan, we worked in collaboration with PLSEA. And we really came up with three primary kind of guidelines for us. The first one being that we wanted to honor that approved calendar for the school year. And so one of the guidelines is making sure we could fit it within the already approved calendar. A second goal was to make sure that we were also prioritizing that teachers were not putting in any time outside of their contracted day. And the last thing was that we also wanted to be realistic. You saw all those hours that were listed for each of the programs. When we did it as a group of seven, it says 57 hours. We found it to be more 70 to 80 hours in reality. So when we created our plan, we also wanted to be realistic about that as well, knowing that teachers were going to need at least that amount of time. So with that in mind, we also know that we have work to do with Bridges, that we are in Year 2 of Bridges Math. And as we've talked about before, that's a three-year cycle where teachers have one year under their belt and need more time to focus on Bridges as well. So we wanted to make sure when we created our plan that we were able to focus on this OLA training while also giving some time to Bridges. So I'm going to just click into, this was probably really small for you. On the left was the Gen Ed, like the K-5 plan. On the right was the 612 Special Education Plan, which differs just slightly. So if you look at this plan for this school year, you can see we're starting our year kind of as normal. And our first early release will be some focused time on data and Bridges so that we can start the year, kind of get teachers started with that. Our actual kickoff for the OLA training will start with our District PD Day on October 16th, where they'll have the opportunity to get familiar with the format, dig into some modules, and begin their learning. And then, as you can see in those dark gray, the early releases in November, December, and January will be continued work on that. With some January 20th, you can see it's broken into two parts. So one of the other parts that we wanted to make sure of with our teachers is, as you know, if, when you're learning something new, if you just simply are reading the material and getting through the course in a hurry, you don't always take everything in. And we want the opportunity for teachers to have discussion time and to have opportunities to take with their learning and apply it into their classrooms. So those connections to practice sessions are intended for that. An opportunity to kind of slow down, talk about what we've learned in those modules, and talk about how we can implement some of those strategies in our classrooms right away. So you can see that on January 20th is an intentional time. And we also have another one on April 9th, connections to practice. February 5th, we have some fast bridge data that we want to take a look at. And then ending the year with some time again to be looking at Bridges. So we have that Year 1 plan pretty fleshed out. And we'll kind of take feedback and look at how things go this year before we develop the Year 2 plan. There are a total of eight modules. So we will complete Modules 1 through 4 this school year. So the other front-loading that we've done with our plan is you can see that list of principals, deans, peer coaches, and the LAI directors completed the Modules 1 through 4 this summer. So that's exactly what the teachers will complete this school year. And we wanted an opportunity to provide more support for the teachers. So if they were able to get the content ahead of time, they can be more helpful for the teachers during the school year. So the other group that we have are elementary interventionists are taking the certification training, which is what the seven of us had done last spring, which means they're doing all eight modules within a shortened amount of time. And they are a certified trainer then for the district. So that helps us in a way because our interventionists at each building then can be a leader at each building to help guide through the process. So each building essentially will have an interventionist, their dean, their peer coach, and their principal as support people during this process.
I think that takes us to the end. As you can see, this certainly is monumental legislation, once again, that came out from the May 2023 legislative session and then followed up with adjustments. One of those adjustments that came out of May 2024, Read Act 2.0, as it was referred to in the legislature, was to extend the deadline, the timeline, rather. And as a result of that developing legislation throughout last spring, that's where this notion of a two-year plan evolved. And at the same time, simultaneously, this team that was just here, as well as four other folks, were going through the training. And it was very apparent, as Gwen pointed out, that the training was much more than just the required documented hours associated with that. But the desire to make sure that it's deeply, that it's timed out in such a way that we will be able to dive deeper into it, as we know, this is very significant work. On top of, as Gwen also pointed out, the Bridges implementation that we enter into Year 2 of that, that impacts most of the teachers, or the staff identified in that list, specifically our K-5 classroom teachers. So we feel very strongly that we've developed a comprehensive plan, a plan that I know we have a lot of experience thus far with the teams of folks that have been through the training and are prepared to support that work. And I certainly know also that we have teachers that are excited and a little anxious about what's to come. But I think those that have gone through the training have found some great ties to the work we've done as well as deepening, an opportunity to deepen our practices around literacy instruction and feel as if, as a result of that work, once we are through the training and to the point of looking at curriculums, which by the way, will be something that will be coming out, we'll begin to explore that later this spring. As we've gotten further into the training, we will be looking at possible curriculums. MDE is continuing to evaluate curricular resources. And that evaluation will continue throughout this fall. They've identified certain curricular resources that meet criteria at this point, but they are still evaluating additional resources. So we want to make sure not to rush into that process and have the training and background in the science of reading that was laid out here. So without further ado, that is our presentation this evening. And certainly open any burning questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions?
I had a few. With a lot of the movement that happens, you know, every school year, between schools and even levels. So are there any? It says here, I'm going back to the Phase 1 training page, where it says pre-K through 12 sped teachers will be participating. Are there any other high school-level teachers that will take, that will be involved in this training at all? Just knowing that sometimes there, there is some of that movement back and forth?
So we don't have any plans for that at this point. All secondary teachers would be a part of Phase 2 training, which also is being further flushed out at the MDE level. They have not identified the details associated with Phase 2 training, specifically who, all the personnel that will be required to participate in that, as well as the training protocol or programs that will be approved to do that. These programs that were mentioned here, the three that we evaluated, they were approved. Help me remember, Gwen, when the actual approval of these three programs was?
Like February?
Yeah, officially last year in January, February. So we're anticipating a similar timeline with Phase 2 training and identifying which of the secondary teachers. Certainly understand the question around people that flow between. And that is something that we also have talked about, how we will, we bring on staff at different points during a given year, for example. And that's another reason to support this notion of multiple years of implementation. So we have through June of '26 to complete this training. And the pace at which we're going allows for some of that fluidity of staff, should that become the case as we look into next year, for example. And people that will have potentially missed out on training this year, we would be able to get them caught up.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just am wondering, is there any funding attached to this professional development?
So, great question. And I'll jump in on this a little bit. So this is, this is, and speak very candidly, as you all know me to be. This is a challenge in terms of some of our legislation that came through that came out underfunded. As many of the superintendents met through our advocacy groups, we costed out for the state that we are probably, you know, a good 100 million in the whole collectively of the state if we truly want to do this with fidelity. Now, I will also say that we are deeply appreciative of our ability to work with our staff in our district to develop a training protocol that fits within our calendar and within contract time. The resources that came and followed the legislation came categorized, and we can only use it for professional development. And in a district like ours, where we've worked with our staff to accommodate that already, we've already covered staff development. And now we've got this resource that we're going to have to get creative with and negotiate how we can utilize these resources in a way that actually deepens the learning of our staff. And ultimately, we're going to be crossing over issues of, you know, are we double paying, not double paying, all that kind of stuff. So that's the frustration that I think many districts are finding with some of this legislation is that as we get it, we get told how resources can be spent versus giving us local control. So we've had the ability to solve a real issue. And that's how we're going to find time. Some districts can't do that. And so they'll leverage those resources accordingly, and that works great. But when you do have a district that does, then we feel a little hamstrung. So we would have loved to have some flexibility in that. But even with the flexibility, we're underfunded as a state by all calculations.
I have a question. Originally, when we worked on the, or approved the half-days or early release days, there was, that time was supposed to be allocated for data, data analysis and for students. So obviously, this is a priority. And so where will that go? Like where, I mean, the teachers have a lot on their plate to begin with, but where is that going to be taken?
Great, great question. And certainly, to take us back, when we adopted, last year was our first year of having those additional early release days. And so we, we brought in some of that work and established some of that, those systems for that. One of the places I would specifically state would be our learning team time. As a part of our, being a Q Comp district, our teachers are all engaged in being a part of a learning team. And typically, those learning teams are grade level or at the secondary level, subject-specific groups of teachers who get together to analyze student data. That's one of the things that we are working very diligently, back to the strategic plan and our focus on academic excellence, to create and our focus on academic excellence, to create the reports. And coming out of the assessment office, if Dr. Zumbush would be here, she'd speak about some of the work that she has been doing with the principals and the BILTS around data and members of our other LAI team. We're actually, we were just engaged in a conversation this morning around making sure that that first October 2nd, I think Gwen alluded to, that's a bridges-focused professional development, early-release time at this elementary level specifically, and how we look at the indicators of assessment and where students are at coming into the year. We also are going to have those conversations related to FastBridge and where we find those opportunities, either in staff meetings and/or learning team meetings throughout the school year.
Okay, thank you. And then, the other question I have, and this is for the presenters who have been through the training. With this investment, what are you seeing done differently? You know, I mean, what can, as parents, as students in the district, after we go through this training, what's going to be done differently in the classroom? Because I know we've already adopted a phonics-based curriculum. So, what are we going to be seeing done differently?
I'll start, then you can also. I see it's more intentionality. A lot of our curriculum, our foundations aligns very well with the science of reading. I think it's just intentionality on, like, one thing is phonemic awareness. Just some little blending routines that they talk about in the curriculum as a reminder for teachers, that it might not seem as explicit in the manual, but when you hear about it in the training, you realize, ooh, we have to make sure we're really explicit with that instruction. Another one that we talked about as a group is, we've had word walls in our rooms for years. And you might see in your children's classrooms, like, under A, there might be a sight word. Now, the trend is really a sound wall. So, under that A, it would be a picture of a student's mouth making the "ah" sound to help them with, again, that phonemic awareness of what the sounds of letters make. So, trends like that, it's more of probably just tightening things up is what I kind of perceive the changes that we'll see. Did you have something else, Michelle?
Just something similar. I took the training while I was teaching phonics in the classroom, and I think as I learned that, I understood why the authors wrote it the way they did. So, without the knowledge of Ola and what they give you, without the research knowledge, you're kind of going through the motions, but then that knowledge of the research really helps you to know why you're doing what you're doing.
Thank you, that's helpful. Any other questions?
I'll just close, if I may, Chair.
I was going to ask a question, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. So, as you're going through this training, and I know it's very much in its infancy for distributing it, but is there an idea of what the definition of success is for this ahead of time?
I'll take a crack at that. First of all, success will be the confidence of our staff to do exactly what Michelle was just speaking of with regard to the foundation and understanding of why we do what we do. That's always essential to do it well. So, I think as our confidence of our teachers, and as we move into that looking at and analyzing curricular resources to understand whether or not those resources help us achieve that goal as we evaluate the resources. And then ultimately, obviously, once we have been fully trained, our staff that have been identified here are fully through that. We've identified the curricular resource that's going to best meet that. It's going to have a direct impact on the student experience. But prior to that, I certainly believe that we're going to have impact as the year goes on, even this year. We won't be fully trained. And just to be clear on that, our staff will not be fully trained until that two-year process. But I certainly would be expecting that there will be some aha moments, just like any new learning, and will be immediately brought to the classroom. And those are some of those conversation points that were alluded to, and I can't remember which of our presenters was speaking to that, but wanting to make sure that we provide those opportunities throughout the training for just the robust conversation that happens when a group of third-grade teachers, having been to a certain point in the training, say, ah, now I understand why, and now I understand how to deepen our usage of the tools that we currently have available to us.
And I had one other question. And I'm sure this is probably still also in its infancy, since everybody's just getting trained and used to it. But how is this, is there a plan to adapt this to Laola del Lago for their reading and also the bilingual impact?
As a teacher from Laola del Lago and the coach there, I really preferred Laola over, not Laola, preferred the Ola training over letters because of his emphasis on language. It really talks about reading and writing as a language and not just about English. So, I think our teachers will find, our teachers at Laola will find a lot of use in it. And I'm excited to help kind of guide them in seeing those connections.
Great, thank you. Dr. Thomas?
Yeah, thank you, and sorry about that, Chair. I will just, first of all, thank you to the team and the countless hours you all are putting in to really pull off a really heavy lift. And, you know, one of the things I wanted to speak to is that this is not something unique to our district. It's very clear, if anything has come out of COVID, it has been the long overdue disruption of public education in this country. And looking at the structural aspects that need to be addressed to fundamentally change and be more responsive to the learners that are coming to our classrooms every single day. No longer are we kind of under that veil of, for lack of a better term, excusing why a certain outcome might exist. We're really trying to get to the root and the research base behind the why, as you heard many of our colleagues share tonight. And just in this month's, you know, before I say that, and where I was going is that if you take a look at our district and you take a look at many other districts in the state, it's not a singular district issue. It's not just a school issue, it's not a certain grade level, it's not just a student. As Kim Gibbons says, it is a systemic issue. This state, this country, because you can see it across the board, is struggling when you look at any standardized state-level measures around math and literacy. And we know that literacy is the bedrock skill set for any other learning that occurs. And I was going through schools our first week last week, and we were talking about math in one of our elementary classes, and the teacher was sharing with the students about how much she has to read to do math and how much she reads just to get in her car and drive to work. I'm reading traffic signals, I'm reading stop sign, or signage, et cetera. Reading is something we will do for the rest of our lives until we die. And I think as we root ourselves in that reality and really dig into the science of that, we will better understand how we can be more responsive to our students. I will close with the fact that, and you all got this, the school board members, you got this. This is actually in today's issue of MSBA Journal. But Kim Gibbons did a really big, a really nice write-up on this. But she closes by what it's going to take. It's commitment, collaboration, and continuous improvement, those three Cs. And this whole notion that you've heard from our team on this, on this continuous improvement is data is developmental, it is not judgmental, you know? We can see the test scores, no matter where you look. We can see those aren't the scores that we would like to see in any student outcome. We also know that those test scores need a discussion in and of themselves. You all heard me say this at our back-to-school kickoff. Are we even assessing properly, and are we truly measuring reading? And I will tell you, as we peel this onion back, our tests aren't aligned to the standards that are around the core reading skills. They're understanding the context of reading, and we're measuring that well. We're not necessarily measuring the actual skill sets of reading. There's a disconnect. That's a part two of conversation that I think will be coming up in this next legislative cycle as well. So, I'm just really appreciative of this team and the work that you all are doing and our staff who are engaging in this learning. It is a heavy lift, it is a necessary lift. And I know that our staff are really wanting to show up in their best every single day to give our students that fighting chance to exceed and chase their dreams. So, thank you, team, for your presentation tonight. And thank you for allowing us to showcase this academic priority of academic excellence.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is personal items. We have four items requesting board approval, all under Director Herman. So, I'm going to hand this over to you for, starting with item 10A.
Thank you, Chair Franz, members of the board. The first item we're bringing forward to you is a request for additional staffing for a 10th grade BSOT coach. In the last three years, they have seen an increase in participation numbers, going from 56 to 60 to 72. And then, the Booster Club has submitted their commitment to funding this position.
I need a motion in a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Velazquez. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. The next one is additional staffing para-hours increase. Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board. We're bringing forward additional staffing requests for a student need on IEP that is taking, an elementary student that's taking a middle school class, so they're extending the hours of the day. A cue language transliterator is needed. So, it's an additional .5 hours per day that will be funded through the general fund.
Okay, I need a motion.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Director Velazquez. Any discussion? Can I just ask for a definition of transliterator?
Okay, thank you, I was going to say the same thing.
Director Chuka here. Cueed language transliterator. I don't even know that I can properly explain it. They are able to communicate with the student utilizing different cues and items. So, it's not sign language, it's not interpretation. It's really utilizing different cues and items and symbols in order to communicate. So, very specialized technology, very specialized skill set. Very, very few people throughout the state are certified and able to do it. But I don't even know that I can properly explain it either.
And I think that's a really good way of doing it, it's kind of shorthand of ASL. And I was at our campus today watching our transliterator. And it's a very unique communication to watch. But it was very evident, both from a large group literacy, as well as a large group PE class, why follow the student to understand the needs and seeing this, that ability to have that connection to learning through this role was absolutely critical and watching that student participate fully. So, I think you captured it very well.
It's a really amazing relationship between the two.
Yeah.
Wow, well, thank you for that. I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. And next, Director Herman, the Prior Lake Savage, PLSFAA for Administrative Assistance Tentative Agreement.
Thank you, Chair Franz, members of the board. On behalf of the Support Staff Negotiations Committee, we're bringing forward the tentative agreement that we reached with the Administrative Assistance Union. And we want to thank them for all their hard work and collaboration throughout this process. So, as you see listed out in the memo, the agreed-upon tentative agreement included moving the Juneteenth MOU into the contract, enhancing the sick leave sharing language to match the teacher's bargaining unit, enhancements to longevity language, enhancements to the health insurance allowance for two-party and family coverage, salary schedule enhancements, including year one 1% plus steps and year two 1% plus steps, adjustments to the reduction in force language, addition of posting of vacancy language, extending our flexible summer hours MOU for the two years of the contract, and then some several formatting and language changes, including titles and bargaining unit changes that occurred last time. But we settled the contract before the Bureau of Mediation Services finalized that. So, we're updating the bargaining unit language, or name, moving forward. The total compounded increase was within the board parameters at 7.533 for a total of 278,187 compounded increase over the two years.
A motion in a second.
So made.
By Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Director Velazquez. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. And the last one is the 2024-26 HealthAids contract, and again, Director Herman.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, or sorry, Chair Franz, members of the board. For the HealthAids, again, I want to thank the representatives that were, that met with us to talk about and some collaborative ideas. So, we're bringing forward the recommended changes to that employee group contract with enhancements to the health insurance allowance, 4% each year, reduction, or to reduce the amount of days to be fully eligible from 185 to 178 to receive full benefits. And the reason for that is we do not have any HealthAids in our system that work 185. A full-time HealthAid in our system is 178. So, updating that language to reflect that change in the positions that has been in place for quite a while now. And the salary schedule enhancements, including a 1.75% plus steps year one and a 2% plus steps year two. And then, one priority that we really dove into some collaborative discussions around was personal leave limitations to ensure we have proper coverage in our health offices. So, mimicking the teacher's contract with limitations to only three staff using personal leave on the same student contact day, limiting no use on the first student contact day or the last five student contact days, also allowing up to two days to carry over to the next year. And then, having a language in place in case there's any exceptions that need to be made for those exclusions that would be approved by administration. And then, again, the several formatting and language updates throughout the contract. The package was within the board parameters at 7.59 for a total of 55,896 over the two years.
Okay, I need a motion in a second.
So made.
By Director Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Director Olsted. Any questions for Director Herman? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six-zero. We have no unfinished business, next we move on to the new business. So, the first item is a board report on the levy certification and audit updates. And so, Director Fredrickson?
Thank you, Chair Franz, members of the board. The Department of Education came out with their levy certification report Friday afternoon, a little after 5:00. They had their webinar this morning to go through any changes or issues that they had with the actual report. There are, they've discovered a couple calculation errors that are not currently working correctly, so they will be correcting those. There's also some data that didn't get into the report yet, so they are working on that. But they will be updating the report daily for, like, the next week. And we are going through line by line, the 39 pages, to make sure that all of the data in our report is accurate. And I will be bringing that to the study session on the 23rd for your full review. The audit update, I've talked to our auditor. They've gotten all the information from us that they need. They are in the process of crafting the management letter. They will be prepared at the October board meeting to do their presentation. Once they have the management letter, I can give you an update of any findings or comments that they may have, but they are still working on that at this point. That's all I have to update.
Is there any questions? Okay, next on the agenda is the adoption of a resolution for the Christopher Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day. Seven B, oh, the consent agenda, sorry. I have it up here. So, seven B. And that was the items taken off of the consent agenda. Director Atkinson?
Yeah, thank you. I just have a question about the illuminate, which is EduClimer, correct? For the purchase order, it's $62,000. And the question is, it says the 30-year the contract. Is it a three-year contract, or where are we at in the contract for that? The same, you know?
I do believe it's year three, that is correct, yes. I apologize that I don't have that officially, but I do believe it is year three.
Okay, so like, so like, we really couldn't get out of this expense. If for some reason, this wasn't... meeting our needs, there's no way to get out of the expense?
Yep, we did, we did look into that.
Yeah, we contacted the vendor and because it's a three-year contract, they were holding us to the commitment for the three years.
Okay. And I'm sure we're evaluating that to see if that's something we want to move forward with. I've, I've heard some feedback, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to share it, but, you know, is the product working the way we originally anticipated three years ago?
Yeah, we are definitely in that evaluation stage. That's why we looked into whether or not we were, because we were considering other options to meet that need. But at this time, we were committed to that.
We're committed, okay, thank you. And then I had a question on the insurance. On the EMC insurance, you know, was that, was there an RFP for that insurance?
So we did an RFP for a broker, and we discussed that with the board. So the broker is, has the responsibility of finding the most cheapest policy, I don't want to say cheapest, the, the most efficient policy that we have that meets our needs. I meet with our broker about three or four times a year. She did have, I believe there were three options this year, and she recommended the EMC, which would be, it actually came in the, at the lowest cost with all of the elements that we needed in there. So we agreed to go with the EMC insurance.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate your, your email, I just wasn't fully understanding it, so thank you. And that's, that's all I have for questions on that, thank you.
Okay, so then I need to take a motion and a second for the consent agenda item 7B.
So made.
By Director Olstad, second by Crosby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that passes 6-0. Next on the agenda is the adoption of resolution, and that is to take the action on a resolution authorizing the school district to conduct business on Christopher Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. So I need a motion and a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Velazquez. And Dr. Thomas, did you want to make a comment?
Sorry, this is our resolution that we do every year. If we are open in the state of Minnesota and conducting business on that day, we have to have approval to be able to do so. And so the board needs to give authority to doing that. And so that is our resolution. I will also add the caveat, last year, they changed the statute around that. And so with us being open and doing business that day, we are also required to have instructional time dedicated to Indigenous Peoples here of Minnesota. And so that will also be part of our curricular plan on that day as well, to ensure that we are in alignment with that statute, the new statute.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote, Director Olstad.
Aye.
Director Crosby.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director Velazquez.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
And aye, so that passes 6-0. And then next, we have the resignation of school board director. Enrique Velazquez has submitted his resignation from the school board effective September 13th. The board has requested to accept the resignation and also approve a process. So in consultation with a lot of people and reviewing the latest legislation, our policy 201 permits the board to appoint a member due to reasons such as resignation. However, we have no set procedure or policy other than the process to appoint a replacement by the majority of the board. The rest is statutory. And there was a change in the statute in 20, at the end of 2024 for the 2024 session. So after extensive conversations, not only with members of the executive committee, but also with the MSBA and have, asking the administration confer with legal on the process, it has been informed of us via statute that the new legislation indicated that if a board member resigned within two years or less than the term, the board could appoint for the remainder of the term. However, we are in September. So when his resignation goes in, he'll have a little more than two and two, and a quarter years remaining on his term. So per statute, we have to have a special election within one year, actually before the first Tuesday of November 2025 for the seat. And so no matter what we do on the appointment, we will have to have an election. The election can occur anytime in 2025 or anytime in general, as long as it doesn't exceed the first Tuesday in November 2025. Because it is a process, it is an expensive process, I suggest, number one, that we leave it up to the new board in January to decide on the election. When we do have the election in, in honor before November 2025, the seat will still be up for regular election again one year later in, because that seat will only be good till December 2026. So the seat will again be up for election in November 2026, no matter what. Just want to make it clear to everyone, we're going to have two elections in two years, okay? So.
And one seat, in particular.
And one seat for one, well, in, in November of 2026, there'll be, I think, four up? Is it three or four up?
Four.
Four, yeah. So that seat will then again be up. So is there, are there any questions on that?
I just have a question, what, what would have been the date that we would have, how do I say? For in order for it to go on to this election, I know we're past that date, but do you know what that date is? In order for it to go on this fall's election?
Well, the final filing was August 13th.
Okay.
So anytime after that.
Okay.
Then we don't get to put another name on the ballot.
No, I understood, because of Secretary State and stuff like that, I just wanted to be clear on that, so thank you.
Okay. So any questions before we go into a proposed process on two elections? Okay. So we are proposing, because this is going to be a short term, and again, another election's going to come pretty close. We're proposing to open the affidavit of candidacy forms for one week, beginning first thing tomorrow morning, September 10th at 8:00 AM. And closing it one week later on November 16th at 4:00 PM.
September.
September. At what time did you? At 4:00 PM.
4:00 PM, okay.
So when the district office here closes, okay? These are the same affidavit candidacy forms that all other candidates that are applying for school board have to fill out, okay? Except there's no $2 filing fee on this one, so they save $2. And the affidavits still need to be notarized. So even though the forms will be online on the website, you still need, the candidates still need to come in and have them notarized by a district person that is a notary, okay? Along with the affidavits for candidacy, we're suggesting using the MSBA standard for questions for each applicant to answer. And we will post those also on the website. And we're going to be asking people interested to provide the responses to each of those questions and be prepared to submit their responses either with their affidavit or at, or at, at the least before the deadline of Monday, September 16th at 4:00 PM. Okay? We propose opening up the September 23rd study session with a board meeting. And at the board meeting, each board member will be provided the responses from each applicant and a ballot. We will allow sufficient time for each board member to review the responses from each applicant, providing we have more than one, and privately cast a vote. We're recommending there be no public discussion on the individual applicants or their credentials, their responses also, or any type of their qualifications in the public. We're, we're recommending this because the community, of course, is going to have a chance in a year or less to actually vote on the seat. After, after the candidate is appointed, no matter what, there's a 30-day allowance per statute for a petition to be filed to challenge the appointment process, providing no petition or successful petition is filed. The seat may be sworn in on the October 28th meeting. So I'm going to open it up to discussion on the board on that process.
So Chair Franz, you had mentioned where, about the process, where was that discussed at? And where, like, how did you come up with that? Because you're saying we haven't had a process in the past, so can you help me understand that? I know I sent in a couple ideas of what other districts have done, and so I just wanted to get feedback on where that, the process came from.
Well, so I conferred with MSBA multiple times because of the change in legislature, so. And then I, I also asked the administration a few questions for legal, I believe one of them is still outstanding, on how we should do this. And the answer came back that, one, we have to have a quorum. And obviously, with potentially two seats missing, or maybe three at every single board meeting. The other thing is, is we need to also make sure that we actually have seven people on the board within so many days. And the 30-day waiting period combined with the whole process, and then waiting to have the candidates file, actually put us dangerously close, if we waited much longer, to having not a quorum or whatever at the, at certain meetings in November that are required, and especially at the December levy certification. So, and again, because we are only, this is a very short-term appointment. Prior to the change in legislation, we could actually appoint for the entire two years at the, for the rest of the term. That's, I believe that's the way it was.
I don't think that's true.
Because we did a change in legislation, well, there was a lot of debate, so we went to legal and asked. But nonetheless, it's a, it's a short term. So we would like to expedite the process to make sure that we have a quorum.
So that was a lot of great information, but it didn't really answer my question. What I'm trying to understand is for the actual procedure, so one of the suggestions in the, I'll just, in the OSEO, they have a procedure online that says, how do you fill a board appointment? And one of the things I really liked about it is that three days after the applications are received, then all the board directors will receive the applications, so that we have time to review them prior to the study session, that you stated, the study session date. So I'm just asking, like, how did you come up with the procedure? And I would like, I personally think it would be helpful for board directors to receive the applicant's information three days after we receive the applications, so that we can study them and we're not spending time at that study or the board meeting going through the applications. I also know in the past, we've done interviews of, and this is like a long, long time ago, I guess. We did an actual, brought the candidates in and did interviews. And so that's what I'm trying to understand is how did we, how did we come up with this, this procedure that you're speaking of?
First of all, it's a proposed because we don't have one.
So is it your proposal, is that what you're saying?
I have conferred with Director Bullion and with administration on this. So it is, it is something that we put a lot of thought and effort into, but it is open to discussion.
Yeah, it's a board decision, right?
It is a board decision.
Yeah, okay.
I am, we're putting something on the table for discussion.
So I personally would like to see, after three days after we receive the applications, I think for transparency, in, in order for, to ensure that all the board directors have the same information at the same time, per our policy, I think it'd be helpful for the board directors to receive those applications and then be able to review them and rank them before we get to that meeting, the next study session that you mentioned. Let's see, trying to read some of the other ones. So that would be one of my suggestions. I also think we could possibly look at, statutorily, do we have to be a seven-member board? Or could we be a six, we have to be seven, okay? Okay, because I know other boards have six member boards, so.
And they now have to go to their communities to petition to keep it that way?
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that. Oh, okay, so you're basically saying there's a time period that we have to have it filled, okay? Understood. So I just think, and then you said everything's going to be on the website? So they'll be like, are we going to put it like a, I saw Farmington had a really great process where they had everything on the website. Here's how you apply, here's the application, you send in, you know, here's all the dates of all the meetings, of how it's going to happen. Just adding a lot of transparency to our community on the whole process. So is that something that we're going to do?
Sorry, from the management side, wherever the board lands on your process, we will be posting that through our public notices so that the community will be aware of that.
Right, so we have proposed that as, just like in a normal candidacy, and this is just a proposal, this is for a board discussion. And, and that we follow the same process, that the, that the questions be put online, but also the candidates, as they file for their affidavits for candidacy, be put online. That's, we're not suggesting changing that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing I'd like to see is, I think the board should have the same information at the same time. And so three days after we receive the applications, I think then the board should receive them, and then we have enough time to review them and rank them prior to the meeting.
So to be clear, the board gets the same information at the same time at the board table. The only thing that, that, that is different is that we do not publish the responses and we don't publish to the board, except at the same time at the board table, the responses from the candidates.
But why wouldn't they receive them ahead of time, so we can do our due diligence? I mean, other, other districts do that way.
Something up for discussion for the board members, like, you know, any other, are there more thoughts about the process input? When discussing, discussing this with Chair Franz, listening to, she had a lot of time and effort put in with MSBA and understanding, you know, how to move forward, the statutes, meeting all of the requirements. In listening, so things were prepared, I, we discussed, we went over them together. I think for me, I am in support of us doing this as quickly as, as possible, getting someone appointed as, as quickly as possible. There was discussion on, in the past, there had been interviews. And, you know, I had thoughts that I actually like that, that process. In discussing and thinking about it, listening to more opinions regarding the interview process or not, I think that whatever we do as a board, the, the applicants, their, their appointment is, is rather short. They will be appointed in October and then up for a special election either in May or November. So in order to keep the process as brief as possible, I think, and also to, I don't know if the word is, to protect the, the process and the applicants, that we receive the, the answers to the questions at the same time. And then we take that, you know, take a 10 or 15-minute break to go over the questions and, and make our decision together as a board. I think that we each could probably have our own opinions on, I, I saw that your suggestions that you had sent in. I couldn't open the OSEO one, the, the link didn't open. I think that, you know, there's, there is options. And we just need to come together here tonight to figure out how we're going to handle the procedure and so that we can fill the, fill the seat as, as soon as we can.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, we, I think we all have to keep in mind that this seat, we are elected by our community to fill this seat. So I think it's worthy more than a 10-minute discussion to review applications and to review it at the board table, which is why I'm saying, or suggesting that when the applications are finished, then I think in OSEO's, I printed it off here if you want to read it. In OSEO's, administration pulls all the data together for us, and then it's distributed to the board.
What's all the data?
All the responses to the questions, so the applications.
For question, questionnaire?
Yeah, they'll, they'll.
So whoever, okay, just to be clear.
Yeah, so whoever applies, they're going to fill out the questionnaire.
But the, the name, okay, so I just want to make sure I'm tracking. The names are public, yeah. But the questionnaire, you would want the board to get three days prior.
Three days after. Three days after the closing date.
The closing, prior to the meeting to review.
Correct, so that we can take our time and go through them and think about it, and, you know what I mean? And so that's, I, I just feel like 10 minutes at a board meeting to make a really, really important decision.
So it's not 10 minutes, the board can decide how much time they need.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just responding to what Director Bullion said, so, okay.
Well, if it's, you know, one or two people, yeah.
But, yeah.
I just think it's worthy of more time. So, I mean, I personally, I, I'm not going to sit and look at a piece of paper and go like, okay, 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 fine, that's what my community wants. No, I think it's, it's worth more time, and there's a reason why there's procedures in place, so. So, I also like the idea of the interview process. I think, again, it allows for our, maybe our community, community's voice to be heard. Can you help me understand the timeline where you're saying we're within a certain time period? I didn't see that in the statute of filling the position, so.
We have to have seven members within, I think it's, it has to be sitting more than 90 days, right? And then we have to have a quorum for the votes. So we considered those, those aspects, and going into the holiday season, going into the tax levy, and.
So you're saying it's 90 days?
I believe it's, we can't go without full board for 90 days, I think was the number. I know we've got a couple of questions still outstanding that have been asked to counsel on a couple of things.
So what happens if somebody appeals, if the community appeals the decision?
Well, that's why we needed to allow enough time, also, within that time period to go back, in case that happens. So, that all kind of added together, and we're like, okay, if that does happen, then we've got to expedite another process, and we need the time to be able to do that.
Build in a buffer.
Exactly. So we did play with timelines a little bit of when, how, where, and all this kind of stuff, knowing that we have some critical votes coming up, not to mention canvassing the, the next election, and the tax levy, and other things, so. And we have had a board where we're going into flu season, and we've had a couple of meetings where we've been a little afraid we didn't have a quorum. So if we have one less seat, then that's, that's an issue.
Well, I think that, my only concern was with the process. I think that having the board members to have ample time to be able to review the applications and put some thought behind it would be my only suggestion, so.
So do you, can I get some feedback from other board members?
I'm pretty comfortable with the suggested process that you both have put together, and that I'm sure involved a lot of asking and figuring out, and legal and MSBA, and understanding statutes and all the things. And I'm comfortable with our board appointing to fulfill what we've just discussed. Also comfortable in not doing public interviews, knowing that it is, while very important, we are looking at, someone could be elected into that seat as early as May, maybe even potentially sooner. I'm not sure what the filing data is on that, but, I mean, May, so that's, that's just not that long, you know? And so, I'm, I think, I think it's a reasonable, I know this board has been in that situation before, and I think it's a reasonable process for it. I'm kind of indifferent on the, on the suggestion to follow what another board has done with putting out the applications privately to the board ahead of time. I, I don't have a strong opinion on that, I, I'll, I'll go with the will of the board on that.
I am also comfortable with reviewing the, the applications at the study session, because, you know, we, you know, we, we, we live here too, and I think I want to try to avoid as much as possible subconscious bias in reviewing too much ahead of time. We may know everybody who applies, we may know one person who applies, we may know, you know, whatever the case may be. And I would like to limit the amount of time to review, not because I don't believe in the transparency of it, and I think, I think these questions are good, and I think it will give us a good mirror into, or not mirror, a, a good lens into, you know, their reasons for wanting to be on the board. And I think timing is an issue. And we have a policy that guides our work in this area. So I'm, I'm comfortable with reviewing at the study session. I guess I'm, you know, kind of like Director Crosby, I'm a little indifferent to it, but as long as we have some time at that meeting, and we can take our time with that, I think that's important.
Director Valeskas?
I get to have a point on it, that's fun. Yeah, I think the process itself is, is fine with the questions. Not necessarily needed to go through an interview process. As someone who processes things internally, I think having the information in advance helps to synthesize what the comments are going to be, and be better prepared for that study session. That's just one outgoing director's opinion.
And so, if the will of the board is to not be able to see the applicant's information until that study session, will it be true that all board directors will not be able to see those applicants until that study session?
That would be correct. So they're going to go to our election clerk at the administration, and we will all get the same envelopes at the same time.
Okay, well, I would like us to build in an ample amount of time, I mean, you know, more than 10 minutes preferably, to be able to redo, because we're going to be able, we're going to have some dialogue too, right? There's going to be a lot of dialogue on, on these candidates. It's, I mean, it's not just a.
It's my understanding there's no discussion of candidates at the board table.
So we're not discussing these candidates? We get 10 minutes to review them, and we're not discussing them? I'm really having a hard time with this process, I'm sorry.
There's no public discussion, is that by statute? No.
No, that's, well, first of all, we do not have a written procedure, so this is a short-term appointment, yeah. No, the statute leaves, we're an independent school district, there's 333 districts, they all do it differently. Some of them actually throw names at the board table and pick them.
So if there were, if we, if we chose to have a public discussion about the board candidates, it would be limited to, to only, kind of like when, when we had a discussion about superintendent candidates, limited to positive feedback only.
Correct, and.
Any disparaging comments or negativity, which is a difficult discussion to have when you're.
Correct, so we would want to make sure that we were not disparaging or saying anything negative about any one person. And quite frankly, if you like the person, or you like what they said, or whatever, per Director Olstad, most people are going to know, you know, who and what, and et cetera, and you're going to be able to read the questions equally with everyone else at the table. I think it's really important that we maintain a respectful decorum in this, and not drag anything through any type of elongated discussion about somebody's qualifications, capabilities, or what they wrote, or whatever, in the public, because we do run the risk of crossing that line. And I don't think it looks good for the board when that happens, and it certainly doesn't encourage other people to run for office, so.
Well, and I guess my feeling on it is that we, our discussion is our vote.
That's kind of where we kind of summarized it, and amongst ourselves, yeah, amongst, yeah.
To avoid any disparaging comments or, you know. So, if you can share, I know you, you, you discussed, like, when we are at the study session, we make our votes, you do the rank voting, you, you, can you go into that a little bit? Like how, we could, we could, the vote could be a tie? Or the different scenarios maybe will help gain more understanding for.
So when we went through this, we know that Director Valeskas will no longer be on the board, so we essentially could have a 3-3 tie. It depends on how many people actually apply. We could choose to do rank choice voting, and then revote on the top two. And, or if there's less, there's just, you know, a couple of people. It depends, but we have that option, and I think we did that before with the superintendent, when we had more than one, we kind of did a rank choice, and then brought it to the top two, and then, and then did it that way. So it really depends on how many people apply. I mean, I'm not going to do a rank choice voting on two. You know, if we have a tie, then I've got to announce that, or Director Bullion, or whomever is going to announce that, and then we'll, we'll figure it out from there. But we do have that option, and we did kind of play with that option a little bit in the scenarios of, you know, if we have six or seven people applying, maybe we send out the ballot for rank choice, and we figure out who floats to the top, and then vote again with the top two or top three. It kind of, it's going to depend, we don't, we have no idea right now who's going to apply, so.
That's kind of why I like to have a procedure buttoned down at the table here, so that we're very clear. And honestly, the Oseo one, they basically give the applicants to the board, they rank them, their top three candidates, they give those top three candidates to the superintendent, the superintendent then gathers those to determine who are the top three candidates. They have a procedure in place, I know we don't, I understand that. But that's what I thought the goal of this meeting was, to come up with a procedure, so there's no surprises. So there's no like, what if, well, this happened, well, we're going to do this, you know what I mean? So.
Yeah, I think that's our discussion right now, so. I, I feel like I shouldn't weigh in, like, I can wait, I've spoken quite a bit. But I am comfortable with the process that's proposed. And I would personally support no discussion, just have a vote.
Who else want to weigh in?
Yeah, I think discussion's absolutely critical, I mean, this is our community's voice, this is not, this is not our vote, this is our community's vote. And if we do not, as a board, align on a candidate that our community as a whole supports, then we're looking at an appeal process, which is 5% of the 22,000 votes, which is not a lot of signatures, it's only 1,600 signatures. So it is in the best interest of our board to align on a candidate that we feel that our community supports, which is going to take some discussion, I believe.
I, I just disagree.
That's okay, that's why we're here.
Respectfully.
Respectfully agree to disagree.
I don't think a discussion will change the outcome, because I think, I think we all can vote with what we feel is best. And we may all vote for the same candidate, that could happen, there could be one candidate.
There might be just one candidate, you're right.
So, I mean.
Well, and with the appointment, the appointment really is, it's the board's responsibility to appoint.
Correct.
So, you know, one, as, you know, kind of muddling through this in my own time, thinking through this process, the board is to appoint this seat. I hear what you're saying, the importance of the community voice, and that's where the special election comes in.
Not till the following year, though.
Right, but when, when a vacancy comes up, it is up to the board to appoint the seat.
Yes, I'm clear on that, mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I, I stand as well, like, I'm, I'm indifferent with the receiving the questions beforehand or not, or receiving them at the study session. As long as I have time to, to read through however many applicants come, and I will, that's how I will, I'll make my choice, so I think that's all I have, I have on that.
Also, let, I just want to make it clear that, sitting on this board the following year, this board has the right to, like you said, either put it in a special election in May, or it could go to a special election in November. So this appointed seat could be almost a year on this board. So I understand you said it could be as short as a few months, but that's up to the new board ultimately.
It is up to, and we only throw out May, because May is the normal time for special elections, but the new board will have the opportunity to determine when, as long as the correct filing and the time and all that kind of stuff goes on.
But that's up to the new board, so I want to just make that clear.
Right, and that's why we're not making anything here in the, in the.
We're not assuming, yeah.
Exactly.
Right, but I just want to make sure everybody's clear on scenarios, that, that is also a possibility, that's up to the new board, so.
Yeah, it is, for sure.
Okay, so I'm going to need, if, if, any more discussion? Are there, can I just get a feel, are we good with the process that I just stated? Or does anyone want any changes, other than Director Atkinson? Anyone else?
I think the, the goal for us as a board will be to figure out the three days before or not. For this procedure, you, you're, you feel strongly that we should receive the questions beforehand, correct?
Yeah, but Chair France just said that I'm the only one that's opposed to that, or that I'm the only one in support of that, so.
No, because we, we all were indifferent, like, not necessarily, we could see both ways. So I think that's where we're.
Right, and the only reason why we, why we did discuss and have some pretty candid discussions about not allowing, or not asking for the three days is because of the potential for research disparagement, online comments, stuff like that. We wanted to make sure that we kept it respectful and treated all candidates the same, at the same time, and the same way, and that everyone here got the same information at the exact same time.
So Director France, I, I just have to, I just have to say, don't we as a board, we hold each other to the highest levels of integrity, and we also assume the best of everyone? So that, 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 you know, that comment in and of itself, I mean, there seems to be a, a level of trust that's, that's not happening here at that board, this board table, that is, is concerning, you know? And so, I would, I don't understand why, if, if the board, you know, if the board received the information, three days after the applications, we're all adults, we take the time, we read the information, we come to the board, prepared to make our decision. I think then, Director Crosby, I do think there's going to be less discussion, because we've already done our homework, we come prepared with the decision. But I just, I don't like feeling or knowing that somebody thinks we're going to do something, and it's just, it's just not right, I'm sorry.
That wasn't it, I think, if everyone receives the, the information at the exact same time, and they can take the information at face value, that was what we were trying to do. But if, if the board wants the information in advance with the answers and the questions, et cetera, then this is the will of the board, I am one person. We made, we put something down at the table, instead of coming to the table with a blank sheet of paper. So I'm, I'm looking for feedback.
We have one board member who feels really strongly, and a few who are fairly indifferent to it. So I, so I think we, we can add that piece to the plan, if, if we're comfortable with that, and make a motion. Are we comfortable with that?
I changed my mind, I, I, I would rather see it day of.
Okay.
We still can talk, Director Valeskas? You're looking at me, I just want to.
Although I won't be here, I think having it in advance makes sense, for the very reasons that Director Atkinson mentioned, just to be able to prepare in advance, come equipped to the study session, and prepared to make that decision of which candidate is the one that rises to the surface.
So, anybody else?
And I think, let me, let me clarify. I, I, I do believe in preparation. I just, I want to check myself, because I know that, I'm just going to be very frank, if I have, whatever it is, six names in front of me, I have three days to do research on these folks, and I'm not sure that's fair to them.
Well, the names are public when they're filed, it'd be a matter of getting the questionnaires.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still, I, I, I just don't think it's fair. I mean, we have six people running for office right now, that we don't have the chance. We, as a board, don't have a chance to interview or talk to, I mean, formally, I guess, as a board, I'm saying. So, I actually, I feel this way out of respect for the applicants, not because I don't want to come ill-prepared.
Right. I think, given the fact that the names will, you know, we do receive the names when they file, just as in a regular election, I think just that. they file, just as in a regular election, I think just that added, I, that added context. For me, I'm fine with receiving the questions the night of. So that, that's my sense. Okay, all right. So, and I'm fine with that, too. So, that would put the majority at that point.
That's fine, as long as we all get them at the same time.
Yes. That's important. Yes.
And I'm sorry, I didn't realize my mic wasn't on for that whole thing. Sorry.
So I'm motion, I've tried, I've tried to capture what we said. So I would make a motion to accept the resignation of Board Director Enrique Velazquez. We're going to have to keep this open after, we need to have a few words. Sorry, sorry, everybody. And so, motion to accept the resignation of Board Director Enrique Velazquez and approve the appointment process for replacing this Board Director's seat until a spec, special election is held per state statute. To, and would include a candidacy filing period from September 10th, that's tomorrow, 8:00 a.m., to September 16th at 4:00 p.m., with an appointment occurring on September 23rd, which is a study session, which we would open a board meeting for, by the board, by the board via private ballot with no discussion, and with a swearing in on October 28th, after a 30-day allowance per statute for the option of filing petition by the public.
Did we say no discussion, though, at that meeting? That's the part I'm not, I'm a little confused by.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate you reading that whole motion, but I don't think we landed on that.
Okay, so we can continue to, to have that discussion. I would, my vote, I made it clear, is no discussion. I think you're feeling like you would want discussion.
Yes, 100%.
Yes, okay. Can I just clarify question, you want discussion between the board members on what we read?
On the board. On the candidates. So we, we, we come to the meeting, we get their questionnaire, we take the time, we read them, and then maybe we, I don't know if we rank our candidates, or we discuss the candidates at the table. Why do I feel like candidate A, and maybe we don't use the names at that time, maybe we just rank them as A, B, C, D, and say, I believe, you know, candidate A has a strong background for X, Y, Z reasons. And we at least have that discussion to understand different viewpoints, different viewpoints of different board members of why they're, they recommend one candidate over another. I mean, we're all going to see different strengths. Some people might say, oh, well, a previous board member might be more qualified than a businessperson or X, you know what I mean? But I, I don't know, I just have a hard time not discussing, you know? I mean, this is the, this is a voice, we're the voice of the community. This is not just our voice sitting here at our ta, at the table. We represent our community. And so I think it deserves, it's a, and it's an important deal, you know? And so, I think it deserves some discussion. Just my opinion. If I, you feel differently, that's fine.
So does anyone want to change it to add a discussion about the candidates? Okay, um, no, okay. Hearing nothing, is there any other thing that you want to change with the motion that Director Crosby just made? Okay, um, does anyone need Director Crosby to repeat the motion? Okay, I'm going to need a second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. Okay, and Martha, this is a, not a roll call. Okay. Just want to make sure, because, okay, good. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's five, one. So we will have the notice up on the website, and the filing time will start tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m., and will complete on Monday, September 16th at 4:00 p.m. And the, we will have a special board meeting on September 23rd that opens up before the study session, to all receive at the same time are, the information on the candidates that they handed in on those four questions, and then we will have a vote. And the vote will be dependent upon how many candidates we actually get, whether we do a ranked choice or just a straight vote, and then we can decide from there. Fair? Okay. Moving, oh, let's go ahead and go around the room and say thank you to Director Enrique, really, Director Velazquez, really quickly. And by the way, we can also do this in our board reports, but because we just spent this whole time talking about him, it may be appropriate just to say a few words. So I will start. I will miss you. I've been serving with you now for over six years, close to six years, and have gotten to know you and your family, and your incredible son, who's a great dancer. And it's truly been a joy. So you will be missed.
And having served the second longest with you, yes, you will be greatly missed. I always appreciated your calm presence, especially when I sat in the board chair seat, it helped me. And I think it was really healthy for our district to have that. I think you're a heart leader, and a really smart guy, so it's a good combination. And going to miss you. Thanks for all your service.
Yeah, thank you.
I will say the same, Enrique. I don't know you really well personally. I wish I had the opportunity to know you more outside the boardroom. You do have a very calm presence. Your, your heart is felt. You are thoughtful and intentional, very mindful. You're kind, and I've really appreciated serving on the board with you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And there's still time to get to know each other.
There is. Well, I'll have to deliver you some pot potpourri sense for Christmas this year at your house.
Well, Enrique, thank you so much for your service. You are probably one of the best humans I've worked with, and learned a lot from you. You do, I echo, the calming presence. You give us a lot to think about, which I appreciate. You challenge, you're incredibly thoughtful, and you're, you're there to London ear, which I appreciate. And I'll miss serving with you, and really wish you well in all of other endeavors that are coming up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I would just like to add, it's been a pleasure serving with you, it's been a pleasure sitting by you, you're most fashionable board member that has been on the table, besides me, of course, but no.
He is fashionable.
Anyway, your kindness, your kindness, your knowledge, your appreciation of respecting diverse opinions, representing all your constituents in the district, I think you do just a fantastic job. You've done a fantastic job. I am very, very sad to lose you at the board table, but I'm happy for whatever your next, wherever you can focus your energy. I know this is a, this is a tough, tough job to do, and so, thank you. Thank you for everything, and I wish you the best.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I'll just say, echo all the board colleagues here, and Director Velazquez, you are a strong, centered leader, who really embraces an introverted style of leadership with finesse. And, you know, there's a couple of introverts on our team, and I get to know their style. I'm married to one as well. And I've also learned, after 25 years, when an introverted leader speaks, you better listen, because they've processed, they've really, you know, weighed various options, and I think that shows in your character and your judgment and your decision-making here on this board. And you've done a huge service to this community, and I can't thank you enough. Wish we had more time, but totally respect your personal decision and things that you have to do for yourself, for your family. And you'll be sorely missed on this board, but definitely still connected in our community.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So next on our agenda is the proclamation for IT Professionals Appreciation Week, and I'm going to ask Director Velazquez to read that proclamation.
Certainly, it would be my honor. IT Professionals Appreciation Week, September 16th through 20th, 2024. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 16th through 20th, 2024 as IT Professionals Appreciation Week. IT professionals play an integral role in ensuring technology's functionality, safety, and security in the 21st century classroom. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 14 DSC IT staff. Whereas IT professionals support and manage devices in our district that students and staff depend on daily, including 10,138 iPads, 877 MacBooks, 1,164 desktop computers, 100 Apple TVs, 600 projectors, 1,070 telephones, and 1,050 wireless access points. Whereas IT professionals manage and ensure the safety and security of our network, servers, and infrastructure, and follow practices that keep children safe online in education. Whereas IT professionals provide technical support to staff and students across our district, including but not limited to classroom audiovisual, account setup and maintenance, mobile device and phone management, and hardware-software licensing. Whereas our district print shop professionals provide well-organized and efficient printing operations for the district by operating high-speed, high-capacity copiers, industrial cutters, and other miscellaneous equipment, along with organizing and processing materials at the curriculum repository. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' IT professionals for supporting the education of our students and staff, and proclaims September 16th through 20th, 2024, to be IT Professionals Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Marcus, do you want to say something? Director Malazo, sorry.
Chair Franz, Board Directors, Dr. Thomas, good evening. On behalf of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Technology Department, I would like to express our profound gratitude to the school board for acknowledging IT Professional Appreciation Week. This recognition inspires the department to excel in supporting educational programs and all stakeholders. Their responsiveness, their empathy, their accountability, and commitment to lifelong learning sets my team apart. I am honored to lead this team, and I thank the school board for recognizing their contributions. Thank you.
You, you run a great team. They are always so kind and so helpful, and they, even if the questions I might feel that I have are very elementary, they never make me feel like, like that. So helpful. Thank you, Marcus.
And Director Malazo, I want to point out that you've run a 14-person team that handles 14, more than 14,000 devices, and that doesn't include the core infrastructure and everything else. So that's quite impressive. There's not too many organizations that could do that efficiently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is basically an adoption resolution. I'm going to hand it over to, to Dr. Thomas to honor the board, which seems a little weird.
Thank you, Chair Franz, yes. And they've moved this up to September versus February, so it's a little change in the timing. You're rising to importance of, of timing, you know, in the state.
Or they want to get us out of the way.
Now, I will, I will say, before we go into the, the proclamation, I can't thank each of you enough for the work that you do on this board. As was stated just a few minutes ago, this work doesn't come easy, and, and, you know, you put in countless hours to the work that you do, and we are really better because of that. So I will read the School Board Recognition Month, September 2024. Public schools have heart. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes the importance of public education in our community. And whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system. And whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools. And whereas the school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws. And whereas school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren. Whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, be it resolved, that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the PLSAS School Board by proclaiming September 2024 as School Board Recognition Month. And I have a, a certificate, including our student board rep
Thank you.
that I have for each of you. Director Atkinson.
Thank you.
I've got Director Burnix, I'll leave that with you. I'll put it in her box.
Put it in her, yeah.
And Director Foley and
Thank you.
Director Crosby.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Director Velazquez. And again, on behalf of all the administration and staff here in the district, we really want to just say thank you for everything that you do. On behalf of the students and staff and all of us here in the district, thank you. And we would like for you all to stand forward and get a group photo.
I'm going to show typically.
Holding your certificates.
Goodness, we should.
Great. Next on the agenda is policy. We have policy 506, 606, and 722. We took 606.5 off of the agenda. So I'm going to open this up. Do we want to go through each policy? Do we want to, are we good with comments on one or two, or none? Anybody have a preference? And have we discussed each one of these at length in the study session?
I have just a comment about one, so I would like to prove them separately, if we could.
Okay, that's fine with me. We'll start off with policy 506. Director Herman, do you want to review the changes in policy 506?
Chair Franz, members of the board, in 506, the only changes that were made based off of the discussion at the last meeting was to add the policy numbers next to each policy that was listed throughout the procedures. So those numbers have since been added.
Any questions? Okay, next one was policy 606.
In policy 606, the main changes here was changing the procedure section to have the two to four parents/legal guardians, and then therefore changing the, the structure above to say seven to nine members. And the rest remained the same.
The only question I have after rereading this, the 606, the procedures for basically a parent to be able to review the content and alternative instruction, that we, that is actually a different policy. It's policy 601.1. So in those procedures, we sort of reference the process, if I'm understanding this correctly, of, we reference, basically, this is the procedure, but I'm wondering if we could also reference this policy 601.1 reference this Policy 601.1? Because I've had parents ask me, well, where is the policy? Because this whole thing talks about, you know, reviewing the curriculum and the instructional materials, but then where is like the opt-out, the process for opting out? Could it be referenced in this? Does that make sense?
Director Atkinson, we have it in the cross-reference of 606 dot, or 601 dot 1. Is that what you were referring to?
We do, but we don't have it in the cross-reference on this one. Does that make sense?
I do believe it is, it is in the cross-references of that policy.
Oh, it is. Sorry, I didn't see it on the other page. Okay, my mistake. Okay. And then in the second question I had on this last part, as I was reading it again, so there's Procedures number one, and then there's number two, Textbook and Instructional Materials Review Committee. So it says, "A textbook and instructional materials review committee shall be formed as needed and shall consist of seven to nine members," which is fine. But my question is, who forms it? And so when we go back and look at this policy, it all refers to sort of the school board having oversight on this. Our, as a school board, we do have oversight on the committees that we, we review the rosters for certain advisory committees. So my question is, who forms the committee? Is it the school board? Is it the, do we grant that authority to the superintendent? So we're not really, it's very vague here. So who's doing it, is what my question is.
This would be the same process as we do with the other curricular reviews or book reviews as well.
Yeah, and I think that says superintendent.
Yeah, it's the superintendent, the same process. I mean, it's the same committee composition. We tried to align those two last time as well, but I think to your point, we would want to delineate that here as well.
Yeah, so it does say it in the other policy, but not in this one.
Yeah, we need to add that here.
Where, where are you?
Would be on Procedures one.
Six oh six, yeah.
Under I two. Textbook and Instructional Materials Review Committee.
Oh, she's, okay, she's on the next page, okay.
We're missing the piece of delegating to the superintendent or staff.
I mean, the, the policy does state that while the school board retains its authority to make final decisions, accordingly, the school board delegates to the superintendent the responsibility to direct the professional staff in formulating recommendations to the school board on textbooks and other instructional materials. So it's in there that, many times in the policy, it says it's a superintendent delegating. So we could call it out in Procedure two.
I think it needs to be, because that's not how we've been doing it in the past. So the curriculum director is the one who appointed the committee in the past, is my understanding. And so.
By, by direction of the superintendent.
Delegated by the superintendent, yeah. Right, so in the 606.5, I know we're not reviewing that policy tonight, but under number seven, D dot two, we specifically say, kind of the same format, we say by the superintendent or the designee. So I'm just saying to order, in order to avoid any misunderstanding, I'm just suggesting that, so whatever.
I, yeah, I get that. I guess in that one, it's more like the, the upper part of that policy doesn't call out the superintendent like this one does. But I, being thorough is never a bad thing, yeah.
Consistent is what I was trying to be. That was my only feedback on that one.
So, members of the board, I'm looking for clarity. Under 606, Procedures number two, is the will of the board to add, "The shall be formed as needed by the superintendent and shall consist of," is that the will of the board is to add that language to provide consistency?
Just to the superintendent, I can delegate, because you can't delegate to staff.
I, I don't have a problem bringing it out. I do think it's, I do think it's automatically in there, but I don't have a problem just saying superintendent.
Okay, so, members of the board, I'm hearing that we, moving forward with this policy, if approved tonight, we will add, "The textbook and instructional materials review committee shall be formed by the superintendent as needed and shall consist of seven to nine members." Is that accurate?
Yep, correct. That's fine.
Okay, and then the next one is Policy 722.
Members of the board, I apologize, I was writing that note. For 722, I do not believe there are any additional changes after the meeting.
All right. With no further comments or questions, I need a motion and a second to approve Policy 506, 606, and 722 with the change to Policy 606, as stated by Director Herman.
So I'm in.
Okay, so Director Velazquez and Crosby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six zero. Now we're on to administrative reports. And for the superintendent.
Chair Franz, I'll just first state that we had a really fun first week of school last week, and really nice to see the energy in our, our schools and our classrooms, and to see all of our staff coming back as well. So it's been, it's been a really fun, a fun week, and starting off on Week Two, being in schools today. Again, feedback from you all last year as we were doing my end-of-year review is just kind of where, where is the time being managed in being able to get back into the schools and really, you know, keeping that as a priority? So it truly is filling my bucket as well. So it's, it's great to be out there. I do want to just share just a quick update with the board on some of the administrative components that will be happening moving forward as we work through our brand-new strategic plan. Part of what I've been sharing along this journey is how this plan is more than just a shelf document, but it's living, breathing. We become this document. And one of the aspects of this plan that we've been discussing for quite some time is, you know, once we land the plan, how do we begin to leverage that as branding the district and for what we stand for? And it's something that is really important, that we have a, a brand, and people know when you come into a PLSAS, PLSAS school, what does that mean? And so part of our work that we did simultaneously with our strategic plan last year was also developing a learner profile. And that's some work that we really had a lot of our high school students generating. And part of the conversation I had with some of our student leadership groups last year was how some of that work around that leader, or learner profile, would also become some of the branding that would be permeated throughout the high school and some of our other school campuses as well. Now that we have a new plan, and that got approved at the end of June, we are going to be developing a process so that we can begin to brand by way of some signage, posters, et cetera, that reflect mainly the core beliefs of our district. You know, this whole notion of unity is a really huge aspect, and I'll just use that as, as one example. Throughout the strategic planning process, as you know, we had a lot of perspectives coming together, culminating into one comprehensive plan. There were certainly conversations and concessions along that journey. People had various perspectives. Some of that made it into the plan, some of it did not. But at the end of the day, we found ways to bring divergent perspectives together to come to a shared plan that the community owns. And similarly, this is something that we're going to be engaging our students and staff around as we evolve into a new PLSAS. And what does that mean, and what does that stand for? And we have to balance a variety of factors. So we know that we have a variety of different signs, posters, et cetera, all throughout the district. We see them on various doors, classroom windows, et cetera. And one of the things that we want to be consistent with is how do we balance all of the signage to have some level of consistency that's directly aligned to our strat plan? And really positively focused versus, you know, on a strength-based approach, like what do we want to see? What do we expect? And tying a lot of this back to some of those attributes that we partnered with World Savvy and heard from some of our students of some of the signs that we have in our schools right now, my ask and push has been, and what do we want to see? What would be evidence of certain things occurring? So for example, we have signs that talk about erase hate. And I don't think anybody in our district wants hate to exist. So in the absence of hate, what would we expect to see? What's the positive of that? What's the byproduct or the outcome of that? And so those are some of the conversations that we are going to be having as we move forward to implement this whole plan as part of our branding efforts. And we know that we have to be very cognizant of how we balance this process moving forward. We know that as part of our history, we've had some very harmful historical things happen in our district that I think resulted in a lot of signs. We, we've had a lot of socio-racial-political division in our country that probably generated a lot of conversation locally here as well. We went through a massive pandemic that also illustrated a lot of differing of opinions and perspectives in how we approach things. So we've had our share, fair share of things that really recognize the division within our community. And one of our core beliefs is finding unity, finding ways to bring our community back from some significant issues of our past that we cannot unchange. They are part of our story. And as you all have heard me say, we can't be held hostage by that story. How do we embrace what is possible? My very first opening, coming here as your superintendent, it was all about embracing what is possible, to really breathe that mood of ambition for what is best, centering also on excellence, and that is our theme for this year as well. We also know that we have to do that in a way that balances government speech, our policies, you know, our proclamations, resolutions that we have as a board that govern our district. That governs a lot of speech that can occur within our district. We also know we have to balance First Amendment, free speech, within our district. And I would say maybe tied to government speech, we have curricular speech. You know, we have posters talking about literacy all over the place as well. So how do we determine what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, and, and what's aligned and what's not aligned? So that's some of the work that we'll be engaging in, and really ensuring that where we land with branding is one that really creates that whole notion of unifying our district and folks understanding that, you know, everyone, no matter who they are, is welcomed in our schools, welcomed in our community, our school communities, and understand what we stand for. So those are some of the pieces I wanted to share with the board that we'll be working internally with as we go through that process of evolving into our, and becoming this PLSAS, strategic plan. So that's my update that I wanted to share with the board.
Thank you. Administrator reports?
Thanks, Chair Franz. I just want to give the board a little heads-up for the study session on the 23rd. We're aware that there is some information out in social media, some charts. And while we certainly welcome our community's input and sharing data, the data that's being shared right now is somewhat incomplete. And I'm worried that it is, because of its incompleteness, is not being understood by everybody in the public. So I have done a deep analysis of some of the work that's out there, and I will be presenting it on the 23rd, so everybody is very clear on some of the funding issues that we would like to address. Thank you.
I'd like just to add just a little additional context to Dr. Thomas's points about the kickoff to the school year. Certainly, it has been energizing couple of weeks, both bringing all of our staff back and all of our students back last week, and looking forward to a five-day week this week. I think that there was, as I was walking through buildings this afternoon, Monday was definitely a good kickoff to a full week in, in teachers and staff and students. I think by this coming Friday are going to be a little bit tired as they get back into the routines. But nonetheless, our focus remains strong in terms of, as I spoke earlier about our presentation around the REED Act, our commitment to academic excellence. And we are definitely working with each of our sites. We have a deadline out to our sites to submit their continuous improvement plan next Friday, September 20th. And we, as a, as a senior leadership team, will also be submitting our department's continuous improvement aligned with our new strategic plan. We've done a lot of work since the adoption of the strategic plan throughout the summer to ensure that our school continuous improvement and department continuous improvement plans are aligned to the components, each of the priorities, having goals set at each site and in each department aligned to each of the priority areas identified in the strategic plans. We're working through all of those details. Those are some things that we'll continue to bring to you as a board throughout the upcoming months, again, to continue to show our commitment to making sure that that document, that strategic plan that you took action on as a board, lives and breathes. As Dr. Thomas was pointing out earlier, it's not just words on a page or on one page, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes. And a lot of that good work is already well underway, has been for, for a strong month now. And it's great to have the students in place and ready to take full advantage of what our staff are going to bring to them in what's going to be a great year.
Awesome. Okay, so any other administrative reports? Okay, moving on to board reports. We'll start with you, Director Olsted. Do you have anything?
I just wanted to echo, back to school. Welcome back to everybody, teachers, staff, students. As a parent, I am very happy for back to school as well. Happy kids, so that's good. Wanted to welcome Anne to our board table. Really excited to have you here. Thank you so much for serving. Really looking forward to getting to know you. And we have our first equity meeting soon. I'm so sorry, the calendar is not in front of me. So I'm really excited about that kickoff, some committee meetings again for the school year. So really excited. That's it.
Director Boyan?
Beautiful night on Friday, under the lights for the football game. Looking forward to Community Fest this coming Monday.
Director Velazquez?
No board reports for me.
Okay. And Director Atkinson?
We just, we have a community education advisory committee coming up on the 19th. Also, really, it's been nice to see students back to school and in the buildings. And then I just have a question. I'm not sure if this is relevant here or not, but will you continue to serve on the Southwest Metro?
No, that is one of the committee assignments.
Or?
Director Olsted was already his second on that, so she's just going to take over for the rest.
Okay, it's good for all our board members to know that. Thank you for sharing that.
She was listed as the second on the board, but.
And I will say, I forgot, there's that meeting next week as well. I'll report back.
I'm talking about the Southwest Metro, not the Special Education Committee. Just saying.
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. All right. So my board report, AMSD, was a fantastic meeting. Dr. Thomas sent out the Leatherman survey, and I got the opportunity to listen in to his explanation of each of the graphs. And interestingly enough, we are split right down the middle, but the priorities were the same for the different groups that were compared and contrasted. So that was really, really good. So there's a lot more in common that we have than, than different. So that was helpful. Overall, I highly encourage everyone to read that because it was really enlightening. And his presentation, I believe, is also online at AMSD, so please listen to it as you're reading through the PowerPoint presentation. But it was very good. They also gave a history of the, the Metro School District Association and how it's changed over the time. So that was also interesting to hear from a historical perspective. Another thing is that MCAPs, MinCAPs, I'm sorry, is having their HR Day on Friday, September 20th, and they're still short some professionals to show up at both the morning and the afternoon session to volunteer to help interview the kids for one of their first events of the year. So hopefully, we can get some more people signing up.
So hopefully, we can get some more people signing up from that. And other than that, I'm going to hand it over to our brand-new board rep. And please introduce yourself and anything else that you want to say. And we're looking forward to your first report.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Anne. I'm going to be senior, obviously. I have a little brother that goes to Glendale, so I'm really excited to be here and hear all the like ins and outs of the schools and how they work and stuff. Sorry, I'd also like to apologize for any excessive coughing or sniffling. I have really bad allergies. As far as student council goes, right now, we're really excited to like kind of kick off the school year and start focusing on our homecoming events. Our theme this year for the dance is Viva Los Homecomings, so it'll be kind of like a, kind of like a party vibe, like night on the town type situation. So, yeah, and I also just want to say, kind of echoing what Dr. Thomas mentioned earlier about like creating like a welcoming and more inclusive community. Student council this year, me and my exec board are really trying to focus on like, not just making our events successful, but also successful, successful for the student body and making sure everyone is like enjoying our events and feeling more like school spirit by just like attending or even just feeling that throughout the school, like our posters. We're trying to do more with like birthdays and stuff. So I hope that you guys get to see that reflected in our school. And I'm excited to work with you all this year.
Well, welcome, Anne. This is going to be great. Okay, so future events, we've got the Fall Community Fest that Director Bulehan referred to on September 16th at the high school from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We also have the State of the District presented by our administration staff and led by Dr. Thomas on, at the DSC at 7:00 p.m. That will be livestreamed for those people who can't make it in person. And then our next study session is September 23rd at 6:00 p.m. here. And then also, we have the Prior Lake Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forum on October 2nd at Prior Lake City Hall for 6:00 p.m., and that's the School Board Candidate Forum. The day before that is the City Council Candidate Forum. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn and a second.
So made.
By Director Bulehan.
Second.
Second by Director Valeskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes six zero. We are adjourned. And we are going to adjourn into a closed meeting for, to discuss the, excuse me, the negotiation strategy.